A website so the public can observe the meeting without needing to be present. City Plans Panel will deal with applications from the city centre as well as the largest and most significant applications the council receive. The aim of the panel is to hear all the relevant information from applicants, members of the public, and council officers to help members of the panel make their decision. In accordance with our protocol for public speaking at Plans Panel, members of the public may be in attendance to speak to the panel. After this is not is not relevant today, so I'll jump on actually. Could I now invite members and officers to introduce themselves and mute your microphones once you have done so? As I said, I've already introduced myself. So can I start from my left, Daljit, please?
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Daljit Singh. I lead the city centre planning team.
Andrew Perkins, Principal Planner Officer for City Centre.
Hello, Gillian MacLeod, Transport Development Services Manager.
Hello, councillor Caroline Groan. I represent Bramley and Stanley Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Al Garthwaite from Headingly and Hyde Park Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Annie Maloney, representing Beeston and Holbeck Ward.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Kayleigh Brooks, Little London and Woodhouse Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Peter Carroll, Carling Farquharney Ward.
Good afternoon, Lewis Footit, Senior Technical Officer and I'll be in charge of the PowerPoint today.
Good afternoon, councillor Dan Carron from the Woodley Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Paul Waters, Geisinger Road and Ward.
Afternoon, my name's Robert Finnegan. I'm a councillor for the Mole North Ward.
Councillor David Blackburn, Farringham Ward.
Good afternoon, everyone, councillor Colin Campbell.
Good afternoon, Brian McGuire, representing the district valuer.
Good afternoon, Stephen Varley, Design Officer.
Good afternoon, Andy Bowles, Clerk to the Panel.
Good afternoon, Amy Davis, Principal Legal Officer.
Nicky O, Legal Advisor to the Panel today.
Good afternoon, Davy Feeny, Chief Planning Officer for Leeds.
Good afternoon, Jonathan Carr, Head of Development Management.
Thank you. That and can I welcome the students from Beckett University? And as I promised later, when members have had their minced heart or their bun, they're quite welcome to help themselves. So please help yourself and if you fancy a cup of tea or a glass of water, do so as well. Moving on then, Andy.
Thank you, Chair. Under Agenda Item Number One, there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Under Agenda Item Number Two, there's no exempt information on the agenda today. Item Number Three, there are no late items of business. Moving on to Item Number Four, could I ask members if they've got any interest to declare? Nope. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, we've got apologies for absence from councillor Carr.
Okay, moving on to Item Number Six then, the minutes of the meeting held on the 3rd of November. I'll go through it in my usual way and I'll take the opportunity to thank councillor Caroline Groan, who chaired chaired us so well in my absence. Well, I was there, but I wasn't chairing. Thank you. Starting on page five. Page six. Page seven. Page eight. Oh, two. David first, please. David, can you put your microphone on, please?
It's regarding Item Fifty-Five, application at Whitehall Road that's come back today. There seems to be no mention at debate we had about the housing mix and we made quite a quite a big thing about that. It mentions what the what the mix is, but it doesn't mention the fact that we were concerned about that.
Okay. Is it the same item, Robert?
It's the same concern. I think we had a very full and frank exchange and we articulated our unhappiness about the housing mix, certainly the lack of, in terms of its non-compliance with policy, in terms of the housing mix, certainly on two and three bedrooms at this particular point. And that is not reflected in the minutes and certainly not reflected in the presentation we're going to have later on. So I won't be voting for these minutes.
There is actually reference in the minutes on page ten in the in the set of bullet points at the bottom half of the page, about halfway down. It says, with regard to policy H four, which is the housing mix policy, and a higher percentage of one-bedroom apartments, it was reported that the housing mix on this scheme need to be site-specific and what was appropriate for the city centre. So I think that that was a reflection of all of the of the mix debate. And there's a further bullet point at the end of that page, which talks about a housing needs assessment that had been prepared to explain the housing mix, which met the demographic of the area and the build-to-rent model. And also there were three-bedroom apartments and large two-bedroom apartments that would be suitable for families. So I think that that reflects that there was a debate and there was a response to that. But what was quite clear at the end, when we summarised the issues upon which the application was deferred, was that that was not one of the issues. I think the point that was made in the meeting was that members had raised the housing mix issue at pre-app stage and in response, and members had saw an increase up to 10%, and in response, the developers had provided 10% free beds. And that was my recollection of the debate. Thank you, Chair.
Is that satisfactory? I hear you say you're not voting for the minutes, but...
At that particular point, well, what is it that the Royal Family say? Recollections vary. And significantly vary at this particular point. Certainly asking my colleagues on this side, that is not at all our collective recollection of what was discussed and that it was a significant fundamental concern that we had. So colleagues will be able to vote as they see appropriate on the minutes. I don't think they are an accurate record of what went on.
Yes, I would like to suggest that the minutes be altered to reflect a bit more about the fullness and scope of the whole debate, which I also remember clearly.
About to suggest that myself, actually. Is it the same thing, Kayleigh?
There's no mention at all of playgrounds and that was raised and members across the board sort of agreed with that.
Andy, can I ask you to add those two items, please, to members' comments? Okay.
We'll amend, Chair.
Thank you. Can I move on? I think I got to page nine, did I? So page ten. Page eleven. Page twelve. Page thirteen. Page fourteen. Page fifteen. Page sixteen. Page seventeen. And finally, page eighteen. With those additions, are members now prepared to accept them as a true record? Please show. With those additions, yes. Okay. Against? Does not satisfy your offer, does it? Okay, so that's carried. Any matters arising apart from what's been raised? If not, can we move on to Agenda Item Number Seven on page nineteen? Andrew, when you're ready, please.
Thank you, Chair. This application relates to the construction of a nineteen-storey residential building to the south of Whitehall Road. Members will recall that this item was previously considered at the 3rd of November Plans Panel, in which this item was deferred with members seeking further information in regard to a number of points, which are all listed in paragraph 1.2 of the report. The applicant has now analysed the submitted information further and this presentation will focus on this today. Just before we move on and since the report was printed, Leeds Civic Trust have changed their position and are now objecting to the proposal. The issues raised are not considered new matters and these have already been addressed within the appraisal section of the original report and also they will be addressed through this presentation. Okay, so the site relates to a wider master plan, which was presented as a pre-application in January of this year. This application is only relating to the area within the red line boundary. The site is to the south of Whitehall Road and this slide just highlights the regeneration, which has already taken place to this part of the city. The present use of the site is as a surface car park, of which the temporary planning permission has now expired. This slide just highlights the various views around the site. And as part of the proposals, there are enhancements to these areas as well. So as noted earlier, the master plan of this site was originally presented to members in January of this year. And members were supportive of the emerging scale and layout and also the landscaping improvements along the riverside Whitehall Road and Riverside Way. So in terms of the first reason for deferral, this was to look at possible changes in the massing and to reduce the potential of dominance. Since the application was presented to members, the applicant has now analysed the scale of development, which highlights this has been based on a wider context. The development is in orange and the existing developments to the east and gaps which exist. The grey building is the... This is part of the wider master plan. Sorry. I must... Sorry. But this slide just shows that the development would still be contextual even once the whole site has been built out and the gaps retained. This slide just shows the development in orange again and how this building steps down towards Whitehall Road and Wellington Place. The slide below again shows, or the just chair, the master plan, which is the hotel block, the multi-story car park and the proposed development in orange and also the proposed office block. These are the mass, that's part of the wider master plan and obviously and just demonstrates the gaps, which would be retained once the site has been built out fully. This slide just provides details of the aerial massing of the proposal and also, again, the master plan of the site. So these are the blocks that are also proposed as part of the master plan and this is the development currently under consideration. This is an image showing, a CGI showing the massing in context. And again, the master plan development is here. This is the proposed, this is existing Whitehall Waterfront and the office block as part of the master plan is behind, which is a separate application to this one. This again highlights the distances and height difference between Whitehall Waterfront and the proposal, of which there's a thirty metres greater height to the proposal than existing Whitehall Waterfront. And then the relationship of the developments to existing buildings. It is also worth noting that the relationship is greater than the distances which were previously established in the earlier developments of Riverside West, Whitehall Waterfront, which feature balconies facing each other. And this slide is based on a wider context of the city centre of developments that have already been consented. So the first one is eighteen metres. This is West Point Apartments to Central Square. This is Apartments to Office. The next one is City Island, building Santorini and Faro, which is a twenty-metre distance and these are main-facing balconies. And then again, this is Riverside West Apartments to Whitehall Waterfront. And this is main-facing balconies and a twenty-two metre gap. This, the Riverside West Apartments to Whitehall Waterfront was part of the original outline permission on this site and just shows the gaps which were envisaged when this development started to be built out. And the distance proposed of twenty-eight metres is therefore considered appropriate and greater when compared with other city centre developments. Have I gone too far? Sorry. Further details were also requested regarding the impact on daylight and sunlight to existing residents of Whitehall Riverside. And this short video will demonstrate the sun path and the shadow and the shadowing assessment. Hopefully it plays. Is it not? Try this one. Yes. Yeah, I'll just move on to the stills because the video won't be played. So it's hard to see, but it's in the packs already. So this is the side. Yeah, so this is the stills from the video, which we were trying to play. So the top image shows the summer solstice. And so at nine AM to midday, the side of Whitehall Waterfront benefits from sun penetration and the orientation, because when it moves westwards, it becomes shadowed, but that's not affected by the development. And as I say, this pack is also in your report. I'll just move on to the next one. So further analysis of the BRE daylight and sunlight assessment has also been undertaken, which has concluded that the proposed scheme does not does not impact on the hours of sunlight enjoyed by residents of Whitehall Waterfront and all apartments benefit from direct sunlight by nine AM. It is also worth mentioning that this site was highlighted for development in the previous outline permission and that this was factored into the design of Whitehall Waterfront. The daylight to these rooms has always been temporary and a reduction would have been expected with any development that came forward on this key city centre site. The BRE guidelines provide flexibility, which state that different targets may be used when based on special requirements of the proposed development or its location, for example, a city centre context. The BRE assessment has concluded that the overall results are good and indicate an acceptable level of compliance with all living rooms demonstrating full compliance with the BRA sun criteria. Another of the reasons for deferral related to the materials and the request for lighter brickwork of the building, which has now been amended to reflect this. There is also a sample panel here today, so members can have an idea of what the end result would look like. The areas highlighted in yellow on this image reflect the blocks in red brick and the grey would be clad in grey brick. So that's the area of red brick and then the grey brick. Let's move on to the... And these images just show other examples of the use of these coloured bricks and the different textures that can be created and the end results. So the use of red brick would take influence from the historical character of Leeds and this slide demonstrates the previous submission against the revised. So that's the revised proposal and that's what originally was proposed. So it's just to give a bit more definition of the buildings. And then the next one is the use of grey brick would take influence from the more modern character of Leeds. And this slide again demonstrates the previous submission against the revised. These images are just showing the materials of the buildings in the context and how these would be viewed. The next is a CGI taken from the riverside, showing the materials in relation to Whitehall Waterfront and also the enhancements along the riverside, including the development proposed under the separate application. So the master plan, which is this building. This is just another CGI showing the materials and the riverside link path along Riverside Way. This is another CGI showing the materials from Whitehall Road. And then in terms of the off-site green space contribution, due to the density of the development policy G five relates to green space provision in a city centre, in the city centre. This allows twenty percent green space on site with the rest provided as a commuted sum. The site generates a requirement of four thousand one hundred square metres of green space, with twenty percent of this equating to two thousand and sixty square metres. The proposal provides two thousand and eighty-five square metres of green space on site in the form of the Riverside Park and enhanced connections from Whitehall Road to the waterfront and also along the waterfront itself. In addition, the commuter sum secured by this development could be used towards other public realm schemes, which are in this area. An example of this is the proposed pedestrian footbridge over the Leeds Liverpool Canal, which would link this site into Holbeck. And officers consider that the proposal is fully compliant with policy G five. In terms of the questions in regard to if any previous applications related to the existing half-moon area to the front of Whitehall Waterfront, a search has been carried out with the various applications for this site and this concluded that none of these applications included any improvements to this area. The proposal now put forward would improve this area and involve creation of a Riverside Park, which will be predominantly grassed for play and gatherings. And this area would also now feature play equipment in response to discussions at the previous Plans Panel meeting. So the play equipment's up here. That bit. And then that's the CGI just showing the area with the play equipment in this vicinity. And then since the previous meeting, discussions have also been ongoing with the applicant and the EA and the EA have now removed their holding objection to this application subject to specific conditions relating to the development to be carried out in accordance with the flood risk assessment. The application was originally accompanied with a viability assessment, of which policy H five of the core strategy identifies that applicants may choose to submit individual viability appraisals to verify that the affordable housing target cannot be met. This was independently reviewed by the district valuer and it was the DV's view that the scheme could not support any delivery of affordable housing or the 106 contributions. Despite the viability position, the applicant committed to provide all required 106 contributions. And since the comments from the previous Plans Panel meeting, the applicant will also now commit to provide twenty-five affordable homes on site. This equates to five percent. This provision has been facilitated by a review of the overall developer returns and a reduction in risk and contingency allowances. The returns and allowances are below what would normally be considered acceptable to institutional funders. However, the applicant will commit to deliver the scheme on the basis that a funding partner has been secured and works will progress within the first quarter of 2023. Officers consider that paragraphs within the core strategy and further guidance within the MPPF require local planning authorities to be mindful of viability issues and changing market conditions and that they should prevent development from being stalled. The scheme represents a key opportunity to regenerate a highly prominent brownfield site on the southern side of Whitehall Road. The proposals provide large areas of open space, as well as improved connectivity to the waterfront and a new section of Riverside walkway. As decision-makers, members are advised to attach significant weight to both the financial viability position and the overall regeneration benefits of the proposal when coming to their decision. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Andrew. Brian, do you wish to come in there? You have been mentioned a couple of times, so...
Well, on the on the current position with the offer of twenty-five units, I've not reviewed how they've got to that. That's an offer that they've put forward. And I imagine, as they've sort of alluded to in the report, it must be related to taking money from one into another, that they may think they can build it slightly cheaper or they may, you know, basically I've had no narrative as to how they've managed to get to where they are. So I can't really add a lot, I'm afraid, Chair.
It does seem that the revised offer is predicated on the fact that they'll be able to or they hope to start early in 2023. Would that make a difference in your in your in your experience?
Well, the way that we appraise viabilities for planning is we assume the cost at the date of the decision to grant consent. Inevitably, in practical terms, the sooner they get on with it, the less the impact on inflation would would impact the scheme itself. But when it comes to inflation, for my calculations, I have to ignore that and assess it on a day-one value and cost basis. So to answer your question, starting it sooner in practical terms will probably make things arguably more viable.
Brian, I understand we have some sample panels at the back of the room. So can we have a couple of minutes so members can go and have a look at it and then we will resume? That was very interesting. Thank you for that. The video that we couldn't show is now working. So can we go back to that, please, Andrew?
Yeah, that's fine, Chair. Yes, as you can see, the sun analysis, this is the side of Whitehall Waterfront, which is in full sun until around midday, and then it moves into shade, but that's because of the sun moving westwards and the orientation of the building. And again, this is just the winter solstice showing again. So the side full sun until around 11am, and then it moves into shade. And then that's just, yeah.
Thank you for that, Andrew. Can we move on to questions to officers then from members, please? Kayleigh.
Thanks, Chair. So I'm not comparing us to New York, but in New York, they step the buildings down like that to make sure that there's good light penetration at ground level. I'm just wondering, because we're talking about in the papers especially, we're talking about being reflective of the surrounding buildings and whatnot. Why is it that the developers haven't stepped the buildings down like buildings near to them?
I think the approach has been that the development here reflects the former development elsewhere. I don't, I'm not convinced that other buildings stepped down to the riverside. This is a cleared site. Other buildings, the Whitehall Riverside Apartments don't step down to the riverside. The Whitehall Waterfront Apartments on the same wider site don't step down. And the buildings to the other side of the wider site towards the city centre, they don't step down. And there is a generous gap being left to the riverside. Not only is there a five metre wide riverside route, but there'll be a terrace probably three or four metres wide in addition to that. So there's a generous gap to the river. And in addition, there's that park area which widens out even further. So I think the short answer is that we don't feel there's a need to step the buildings down in this case.
Any further questions from members? Robert?
Policy H4, and I'm specifically looking at pages 90 and page 105. So in terms of policy H4, we miss the maximum policy target on one beds. We miss the minimum policy target on three beds. And we miss the target on them all. Yet it says proposed housing mixes considered to accord with policy H4. I wonder if somebody could explain how by missing one, two, three, four, five targets, within the policy that it accords with policy H4. Thanks, Chair.
So in terms of policy H4, there's the maximum and minimum parameters. And so in terms of the proposal, it does fall within some of those parameters. So it's over on the one bedrooms, it's 51%, and then it's under on the three bedrooms in that it's 10%.
You come back?
Well, I just have a very different view of what accord with anything actually means at this particular point. At the point you're missing three, four, five targets out of the, I don't know, 10 targets at that point, 50% failure rate. I don't think that does accord. But having said that, Chair, that's a debate for another day perhaps.
Okay, any more questions? If not, can we go on to comments? Comments from members? Robert, you first did it again.
Lord, here we go again. Right, policy H4 is not complied with in this particular case. It fails miserably. It is in excess of the policy suggestions, certainly on one bed. We all know that in terms of creating cohesive communities, if you have too many one beds, then you get a revolving community that isn't good for community cohesion. You get turnover that undermines that sense of community. And as such, that's why we have policy H4 to try and make sure that we have minimum, maximums and targets that we aim at. We're missing the maximum on one. We're missing a minimum on three beds, which is all about families and other such things. And we don't hit the targets that we're proposing on one, two or three beds. So how we can build cohesive communities by accepting this particular housing mix is entirely and utterly beyond me. Not surprisingly, I won't be supporting this particular application on the basis that it is non-policy compliant. I'm always told, as I battle on morely sites regularly on H4, there's nothing we can do, council, they're all policy compliance. I'm now told, when it's not policy compliant, we're still recommending approval. I just don't understand that type of contradictory world that I'm supposed to live in. So I won't be supporting it, Chair. Thank you.
Robert, Colin, please.
I think we've all got some reservations about this development. Notwithstanding the housing mix, there are a number of other areas where I think we're at the edge of policy compliance. Now, I think it's interesting that we have perhaps persuaded the developer that they can provide more affordable units or less unaffordable units, perhaps would be a better description. But I still have some concerns, and I appreciate officers are saying to us we have to, I suppose, look at viability and the prospect of regeneration of this particular site. I don't think regeneration's a problem because we've got way beyond the day when we would have accepted development, almost any development at any cost to get some something happening down there. That's not an issue anymore. There's plenty of pressure on development across the city. And I know we've expressed, and I've expressed it at some length, whether the developer's argument about viability for this type of development is really valid. Because I don't believe that the, notwithstanding what what the district valuer says about how they're supposed to value these things, I'm not convinced that that's actually how developers are valuing them. Because I don't think they're taken into, I don't think we're taken into account, I should say, either the potential for increased rent or the sale cost at the end of the initial period when you make the money back. I said last time that I'm not convinced about the green space on this site. I know you wax lyrical about the fact that you'll be able to walk down by the side of the river, et cetera. But it's still only 20% of what we would normally ask for. And I know it says the policy allows 20%. It doesn't encourage 20%. It encourages 100%. And there has to be special circumstances. And it struck me this week because there's a report, isn't there, that Leeds has managed to get to the bottom of the list of green cities. And I think we should actually be saying, that's not really where we want to be. We don't really want to have a situation where developments don't meet our policy to provide green space. Now, I like Robert really torn on this one because I don't think it's a particularly good development. And tweaking the brick colour may endear it to some people, but not necessarily to me. But it strikes me that we had a master plan for this site. And we're actually being asked to agree bits of the site for development. So it's a piecemeal piece of work. Now, I think that we should be saying, from my point of view, you know, we should be saying, look, the entirety of the site would require this amount of green space. Now, if we're not doing it on this particular part of the development, where in the rest of the development is the green space going? And so at the moment, I think we have to, you know, we have to stand up and be counted, don't we? Either we agree policy for mix, we agree policy for affordables, and we agree policy for green space. And I think green space is particularly important in the city centre because there's so little of it. Then we either stand up and be counted, or we just simply say, well, okay. And I prefer to be stand up and be counted. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Colin. Moving on, David, please.
Thank you, Chair. It seemed to me when I read him through this that very little's changed from the last report. I welcome the extra affordable housing on site. But the basic facts of the housing mix, the green space, hasn't changed at all. And I'm still not satisfied with some of the diagrams I saw about sunlight and that that we're just seeing. So as far as I'm concerned, nothing I've seen has changed my view from last time. This development's not acceptable.
Any further comments? Al, please.
Yes, I was pleased to see the change in the bricks, and I actually like them. I think that would look okay. I accept the change in the distance as well, and I believe in the pictures that we've shown and the animation of the sunlight. I do find the housing mix a problem, I must say. I think we discussed it at length last time, and my views haven't changed on that. I also think if they could find a bit more viability from saying there isn't any, they could maybe look and find a bit more. And yes, I'm in favour of more green space as well, as much green space as possible, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Any further comments? No, can I? Kayleigh?
Sorry, Chair, I weren't going to say anything, but then I decided to. I think in terms of the density, I don't think if this was a smaller development that we would have as much of a problem with the green space or necessarily with the housing mix. I think it's due to the density that we've got such a problem because the, if you put that number of households in an area, you're going to have an increased need for green space. If you put that number of properties in an area, you need to make sure that there's enough three beds available for people to start families in or to flat share in. And to ensure, as colleagues across the way have said, that it's a proper community and it's not too transient. So I agree with what's been said so far.
Thank you. I see no more members. So can I ask if there's any officers want to clarify anything or sum up? David?
Just happy to make an observation, Chair. I mean, you know, certainly take the concerns that have been raised by members. I mean, we have, through Andrew's presentation, sought to address the matters raised, and we have satisfied ourselves as officers that the policy areas have been sufficiently covered, and we are recommending approval for it. I mean, just to remind members, this is a significant brownfield site in the heart of the city centre, a short distance from the central railway station. And there are key connectivities from this site in terms of green space to riverside routes and beyond. So it does need to be seen within that broader strategic context. I take the point that's been made about the wider master planning exercise, but in front of us today is this part of that site set within the context of that master plan that's previously been considered by the panel. So we are seeing it contextually rather than as a standalone as part of the city centre. So just some observations, Chair, if that's helpful.
Algis, would you like to summarise the debate?
Thank you, Chair. So I think there's one member who's clearly said that because of the housing mix being proposed, that in his view is contrary to policy, and therefore he's not prepared to support the proposals. Other members have raised issues, reservations about, in addition, in their view, the lack of green space on the site. And then the approach to viability, perhaps the developers' approach differs from that of the district valuer. And, you know, we haven't taken into account the increased potential rent returns in the future. There was also some acceptance of the change to the materiality and acceptance of the the distance involved between the proposed development and existing building, residential flats. And then there was a comment about if this was a smaller development, then some of those issues might be less contentious, some of those matters that are raised. If I may, Chair, can I just make a couple of points? I know you did ask just before David commented. I do need to be clear about the green space policy. Our own policies, save for city centre, high density schemes, green space contribution, green space approach is a combination of onsite provision and offsite contribution. Because it's just not practical for high density schemes to deliver all the green space that the metrics generate on the site. So I would ask members to bear that in mind. The other thing about the viability, the district valuer has to follow a standard approach set by RICS. In this particular case, the developer has got a funder on board and he's ready to go. That for the developer reduces their risks. And it means they don't have to set aside as much contingency and take as much profit as possibly a district valuer would allow them to do. And that accounts in a big multi-million pound scheme, that accounts for the differences which you see between what the district valuer is saying to members, like this scheme can afford, and what the developer is prepared to put forward. And I think in terms, but there's a limit to that. Now, and then the last point, in terms of the housing mix, again, the housing mix for a city centre development policy does allow the character of the area and the needs of the demographics of this area to be taken into account. And that does lead to different mixes in the city centre as opposed to the outer areas. And it was a point that members have debated, both at pre-application stage and the last time this came to panel. And members have clearly said on this and other schemes that actually we want to see an increase. And in this case, they'd said we want to see an increase of at least 10% three beds. That was a point upon which members were focusing. And the developers, notwithstanding the viability case, have met that. So they came in with 8%, and now they're meeting 10%. And that's no different to the other site that was approved at the last panel, which was also offering 10%, which is a tall tower building at the, close to the Wellington Street site, Skinner Street site. So sorry if I overstepped the mark, but I just wanted to make those comments clear in terms of the officer's position. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I've listened really carefully to both David and Yeah, thanks, Chair. I've listened really carefully to both David and Daljit and in, in planning terms, of course, you are correct. I'm just thinking about this from a development plans panel point of view, as you might expect me to this year. And we work really, really hard on development plans panel to build the vision for Leeds really through policy. So we're constantly pushing the boundaries for more three beds, better housing mix, more green space. We're fighting the good fight, if you like, for, for the future of Leeds through those policies. And when your whole heart and mind is in that, that vision and those policies and development after development comes forward with, which is either marginal to them or, or doesn't meet them in entirety, it is inevitably a disappointment. But I mean, like councillor Garthwaite, I, I welcome the improvements that definitely have been made and the issues that definitely have been addressed in this development. I hear my colleagues across the way rightly pushing, pushing at those boundaries because you, you're not, you're not feeling enough of enough is being delivered. And as a development plans panel chair, in my heart, I think the same thing. But I also understand the need to move forward in the interest of Leeds development and getting on with business. So whilst I'm, I still have concerns certainly about affordability and housing mix on this scheme. You know, I think I would probably be prepared on balance, given the improvements they've made to it to support it. But we will not change the shape of Leeds and the way that our planned environment develops unless we keep on making these points. And sometimes we really do need to push them to the absolute limit because we won't change unless we do. And that's our job as a plans panel, isn't it?
Have been successful over the years of increasing three bedroom, three bedrooms from 3% to 10% and affordable from five to seven. So we've had a success and it's been through pushing, as you rightly say. Peter, you indicated you wanted to speak and then we've got to.
Thanks, Chair. I mean, this is quite a difficult one really for, well, the point that Caroline's raised. It puts me in mind of when you're doing your driving test. Because on a driving test, you can have a number of minor things, minor faults and still pass. And if we look at this list, all of us will know, one of these things will have been on a development we've approved at some point. 10% or fewer three beds or 20% of the green space and then a contribution. The difficulty is when you add all of those together in one site and, and at the point where we didn't have the affordable housing either, then obviously it becomes a site where you see no benefit whatsoever. All you see is, is areas where it is not meeting the targets, regardless of the policies, shall we say. And I think that's the real difficulty we have because yes, we may have accepted developments with fewer than 10% three beds in the past. But they may have had complete affordable housing provision on that particular site, may have had something else. The difficulty is when we're weighing it up as panel members, all of these things don't meet where we are. Would somebody at appeal feel the same as us? And I guess that's the difficulty that we've got that in our mind as well. It's not necessarily where we'd think on this. It's where then, if this goes through to appeal, I, I would imagine, looking at the policies as they are written now, it would be seen to be policy compliant and to have come beyond the valuation that has been done as per the government's framework. So I think unfortunately on this, it's not a development I'm particularly proud to support, but I think it is one that the only thing we probably can do is begrudgingly support it and then work on the policies to make them stronger and neater from there onwards. I think we have made a long progress as a panel. I think probably if I think, I've been here five years nearly. When I started on this panel, we'd have probably just approved this in many ways. And we have gradually moved those forwards, but I don't think we can suddenly flip on one development at a time and make it different. And I think that's maybe where we'd, we'd be going on this. But I think we can't see too many come like this, otherwise I think we're going to be fretting around what the entire city centre is going to look like.
Thank you, Peter. Wise words. This is a site, I have to say, that we've been waiting for development for nearly 20 years. We've had sites before and they haven't come to fruition. I did particularly ask Brian the question regarding we haven't, having funders on board and they could produce, they could start early in June, did that make a difference? And clearly it does. If we, if we were to deferral once more, we might lose that opportunity, is all I have to say. It's very important to the city. We, we obviously need houses and we certainly need houses for rent. So members, I think we should consider this very, very carefully. And with that, can I ask Peter, are you prepared to move that recommendation?
I'd rather not. I'd rather support the, I'd rather be moving an excellent one that meets all our targets. But I'll, I'll move this one at this time, Chair. I think it does need to be moved.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favour of the officer's recommendation, please show. Those against? And of course, that accounts for all voting members, so I have no need to ask for abstentions. It is passed 6-5, I make it. Is that correct, Andy? Okay. Well, we've had a good debate on this one and I'm sure developers who are sat here listening very carefully will need to understand that we will continue to push to, the boundaries are there, but we will keep pushing at them to get a better deal for the city. Colin, very quickly.
It is very quickly. Thank you, Chair. I was just going to address a remark to the, the people behind us. And I, I think it might be useful if, when they get back to the university, if they ask the lecturer if they'd explain affordability. Because this is one of the keys to this discussion. And I, I think if you don't understand affordability, then it's very difficult to get a picture mostly about what we were arguing about. Just a suggestion, Chair.
Can I just respond to Colin? Is this a bid, Colin, for you becoming a visiting lecturer at Beckett University? Caroline?
Oh, they wouldn't, they wouldn't like me there. I'm much too radical for them.
I was just going to respond to Colin's comment by saying that the Chair and I learned earlier on that there are assessments after these visits to plans panel for the students. So I imagine they may well include issues on viability, Chair.
Can I thank you all, particularly our students. I hope you've learned something today. And if you have learned something today, please drop me an email and tell me what it is because I certainly will benefit from it. You can see how in planning, there are many, many issues to consider. They have to be carefully balanced up and weighed up. And the vote today was very narrow, as you've seen, six of the members were in favour and five were against. And very strong opinions was expressed on both sides of the table. Amongst the people who voted for it as, as well as people who didn't. But that's democracy at work and we are where we are. And can I take this opportunity to wish you all a Merry Christmas? I know it's a while away yet. My grandson started opening his advent calendar, so we must be nearly getting there, 24 days, 24 days to go. So have a good time. And I know for councillors, there's quite a lot to do. We've lots of meetings to attend before then. But do find some time to spend with the family and relax a bit and come back and we'll do it all again on the 5th of January 2023. Thank you.